Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm going to call the April 3 city council meeting to order. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Councilmember Hunt is also with us this evening remotely. So before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's order of business is a little different than normal. At the February 21 city council meeting, the council adopted an ordinance modifying the order of business at city council meetings, moving the business items that are actionable before the more passive informational agenda items. That change is now in effect. As a result, you'll notice that the city council committee agenda reports and the mayor's report have been moved to the bottom of tonight's agenda. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a couple of items of special business to start off tonight, and I'm going to move over to the lectern and do a couple of proclamations. I'd like to invite our police chief, Paula Schwan, police dispatch supervisor, Tricia Belizzi, and police communication specialist, Teresa Davenport, up to the lectern with me. We are going to be recognizing Public Safety Telecommunications Week with a proclamation of recognition. And for the community may not be aware, we do have a dispatch center in Issaquah, which is a little unusual for a city of our size, but we're very proud to have it. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Issaquah Communications Center, and whereas professional safety telecommunications are a vital link for our community and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications of the Issaquah Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals in this community. And whereas our dispatchers exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, now therefore I, Mayor Lou Polley, City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through 15 to be Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Issaquah. And I invite the community to join me in thanking Issaquah's dispatchers for their service and outstanding contributions to our community. I'm going to hand this off to ladies and chief if you would like to address the group.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. This group of people have done an amazing job. They are the lifeline for our officers on a regular basis in the calm and also in the storm. They are a calm voice and very resourceful when they need resources, and the officers couldn't do their jobs without them. And to have someone calm on the other end of the line when someone calls 911, they handle tens of thousands of calls every year in our small center, and it's growing rapidly. So I commend them, and we couldn't do our jobs without them, and we thank them very much for this. Thank you for the proclamation, Mayor.
We have to do a picture, too. Okay, chief, you're in the middle. Thank you, ladies, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, chief. The second item of special business this evening is ID 1420. It's the Arbor Day proclamation. And I'd like to invite urban forest supervisor Dan Hints to the lectern to receive the proclamation. Come on up, Dan. Nice to see you. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day will be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, they beautify our city, increase property values, and enhance economic vitality. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Issaquah is an active Tree City USA designation for 30 years. And whereas the City of Issaquah celebrates Arbor Day year-round with many events to enhance and expand our tree canopy. Whereas the City of Issaquah is celebrating its annual Arbor Day on Thursday, April 20, 2023, in your calendar. Now therefore I, Mayor Lou Polley, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim that Issaquah celebrates Arbor Day and carries that spirit through our activities, policies, and priorities all year long. I urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to create a healthier community and promote the well-being of future generations. So Dan, thank you for coming this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Polley, hello, council. I've met several of you before. My name is Dan Hints. I'm the new urban forest supervisor with the City of Issaquah. This is my, start of my third week right now. I've met many of you in my past role with the Mounds of Sound Greenway Trust, managing the restoration program there. So I've had an awesome opportunity to be working with the city in that capacity, and I'm really excited to get going here, working in the city now. So I'm sure we'll be connecting here soon on the development of our urban forest management plan here in Issaquah. Really trying to, you know, pick up and keep building on the efforts with the Green Issaquah Program and really expand some of the education and outreach opportunities around our urban forests and kind of more broadly the natural resources that we are so lucky to have in this community. So I'm really excited to work with you all. I will say this is the 31st year as a Tree City USA in Issaquah, which is really an awesome accomplishment. I'm really excited to carry that legacy forward. There are 92 communities within the state of Washington that are identified as Tree City USAs, and Issaquah has actually the eighth most consecutive years at 31 years and counting. So something I think we should all be proud of and not take for granted, and I'm really excited to keep working to promote, protect, and continue to make sure we're all valuing this great forest we have here in Issaquah. So Mayor Polley, thank you.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, everyone.
The city administrator will take a picture of us. You're welcome. We're so happy to have you here. Great, thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and members of the public may address their council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on your phone, press star 3. If you're joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City clerk, has anyone signed up for comments this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. For those making comments, please make sure to direct those comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized virtually, unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern right in the center if you're here with us tonight in person. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. And city clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Rachel Wright.
Hello, my name is Rachel Wright, and I'm the vice chair of the Issaquah Arts Commission. I want to thank you for the continued support and funding that allows the Arts Commission to recommend grants to encourage the visual and performing arts in Issaquah. In our last round of granting, there were 15 organizations that submitted applications. And of those 15, more than half said that granting dollars would be used to help cover space rental. The locations included city-owned facilities such as the Senior Center and Pickering Barn. I think this raises a few interesting questions and opportunities. How many artists and organizations are not participating because space is hard to find and expensive? Perhaps we need to consider what kind of resources are needed. Is it granting actual dollars or waiving rental fees for city-owned spaces? Or perhaps it's a combination of both kinds of resources. What can we do to make it easier for people to secure space at properties such as Pickering Barn, the Senior Center, and the Community Center? And what other city-owned buildings might work for community arts programming? At our March meeting, the Arts Commission received a proposal for an Issaquah Film Festival focused on the work of young filmmakers. The proposal came from three students in Issaquah. Each one was either studying filmmaking at the college level or getting ready to apply to programs at the college level. Of course, they are in need of space, and they're looking to partner with Issaquah. This kind of event requires both space and the appropriate equipment. Village Theater has space, they don't have the right equipment. Issaquah High School has the appropriate theater space and equipment, from screens to projectors to sound. Yet Issaquah High School is still not available for community use since COVID protocols were put in place three years ago. The public funded the construction of the high school with the understanding that facilities such as the theater would be made available for the community to use. What can be done to reopen access now that restrictions are no longer in place? The Arts Commission will be working to better understand and support the community's need for space and recommending solutions. Our goal is to make it easier for creatives to perform, inspire, and connect. We will continue to share our progress with you, and we hope we can count on your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. We really appreciate it when commissioners come in and provide information for councilmembers. So thank you very much for doing that. That's great. City clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to do comments this evening?
No, we don't have anyone from the public online with us tonight.
Thank you. So thank you very much for your comments. And as a reminder to anyone who is watching, you may always be able to reach your council by writing to them at citycouncil@issquahwa.gov. Flipped back to the proclamations, but I'm pretty sure you guys don't want to do them all over again, so turn the page. Council President Walsh, do you have any email comments to summarize on tonight's agenda items?
Yes, despite our sparse agenda, we did have a comment saying they were against one of the consent items, which is AB 8587, the grant from King County regarding aquatic facilities, suggesting that it was a misplaced use of our time. And then also concerns about the informational update item, the community engagement toolkit suggesting that it should come before the Equity Board and still needed some work. And that concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Council President. So we will be moving into the consent calendar, and per the city council's new rules, the mayor's report and committee reports will occur later in the meeting. However, the mayor and committee chairs do have an opportunity to provide committee reports or informational announcements regarding the consent calendar item prior to approval. So I have a couple, two items that I'd like to share this evening. First is on the King County Aquatic Feasibility Planning Project Grant Agreement. So on tonight's consent calendar, Agenda Bill 8587 seeks city council authorization to accept an $80,000 grant from King County to conduct a pool feasibility study that focuses on the possible expansion of the Julius Bohm Pool. The Julius Bohm Pool was built in 1972. In 2015, as a 40-plus-year-old facility, important facility and system lifecycle investments were performed. Now over 50 years old, the pool remains a popular and heavy-use facility. Along with lessons, lap swim, aquatic exercise, and community swim, the pool plays host to six high school swim teams, girls' and boys' teams from the three Issaquah School District high schools. A new aquatic facility is likely in Issaquah's future, however, at a probable cost of $30 to $40 million. That potential new aquatic facility is probably many, many years away. And recognizing the pressures of current community use and the potential of a fourth high school and two additional swim teams before a new pool can be built, this feasibility work will help us determine if option exists at the current pool to add capacity and decades of life in a creative and cost-effective way. The grant will explore and help determine if there are cost-effective solutions to adding pool capacity within the existing pool site. The Issaquah School District will remain as a partner in this exploratory work, both as a primary user of the pool as well as a neighboring property owner. Clark Elementary School is right beside Julius Bohm. So public engagement and updates will be part of the assessment work as well. The second item is about the Public Engagement Toolkit. It is included in tonight's consent calendar as an informational update regarding the Public Engagement Toolkit. As Issaquah's growing community continues to diversify and change the chain, the importance of public engagement is essential and at the heart of the role of public servants. Using guidance from award-winning engagement programs throughout the country, the city's communications team updated their Public Engagement Toolkit to assist project managers as they develop customized plans for engagement depending on the issue, topic, audience, or timing. There are no items on tonight's consent calendar that refer to committee, so I will not call for any committee reports at this time, but I have a council member who wants to ask a question.
Can I talk a little bit about the one agenda bill we do have that came through committee in February?
City administrator, is there, did we miss something on the consent calendar?
Oh, it's, well, it's not on consent, it's on regular business, but we'll do it then?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I thought I was losing my mind, and we were going to do committee reports. Okay, but this is our first night, so we're getting there. Okay. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. And we can hear you, as council member, thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the consent calendar as written.
I second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, the motion before councils to approve the consent calendar is presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 7 to 0. So now we are moving into regular business, and the first item is AB, first and only item, AB 8582, Public Works Staffing Resources. And councilmember, in order to fully understand your question, I will head over to the city administrator and city clerk about process here.
It's certainly appropriate for the committee chair to make comments.
Okay.
If you'd like before the presentation.
Well, I do it after the presentation.
Okay.
That would be better. Thanks.
Sounds good. Then I'd like to invite Public Works Director Emily Moon to make that presentation. Thanks, Emily.
And Madam Mayor, before Director Moon gets started, I'd like to just make a couple of introductory comments. We appreciate the time that the committee, council committee, spent reviewing this item and reported favorably on it. There's a lot of moving pieces to the presentation this evening, all really focused on one thing, and that is we want to make sure that we continue to provide and expeditiously work on capital projects for the community. Public Works Department's gone through lots of change, pandemic, lots of issues over the last several years. And with Director Moon's arrival here last year, she's, I think, done an excellent job of assessing resources. And what you have before you this evening is her recommendations on some additional resources that are needed. With additional resources also come costs associated with those resources. And in the report this evening, we go through the administration's recommendations on what we believe would be appropriate adjustments to the budget in order to accomplish the hiring of those additional resources. Those will also require some readjustments to current projects. And because there's quite a bit before you this evening, we think it would be appropriate, rather than having the council act on this item this evening, but instead to hear the report, get feedback from you, and then come back at your April 17 meeting with the appropriate resolutions amending the budget and amending the salary resolution to actually implement this, rather than wait what would be the customary two months or three months for a quarterly revision. We think that it's important to have those changes considered by the council and then acted on by the council. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, our request would be then to have Director Moon go through the presentation, answer questions, and then have this item continued until your April 17 meeting.
Thank you, city administrator. Any questions, or should we just be moving right into the presentation? Presentation? Public Works Director Moon.
All right, thank you very much. Happy to be here, talk about our great Public Works Department. So tonight, we do have before you a request for additional resources for the department. And as the city administrator alluded to, one of the reasons why this is coming before you at this time is because when I started about six months ago, my first task was to really understand what the department was doing, how well it was doing, and what was needed, how to advance the work, how to ensure our success. It is a great department, full of a lot of very dedicated people, people who are always striving to do more and always striving to do better at what they do. However, it's a difficult thing to say to you tonight that we don't have sufficient resources to be able to get our 2023 and 2024 work plan accomplished, nor do I think we have enough resources to meet the future community needs, particularly on capital and on equipment replacement and care. So this proposal was developed to be responsive to those community needs and to help propel our department to a place where it could successfully deliver on those projects. So we have put together a proposal that includes a request for new staff, for new positions. Two of those would be engineering positions. I'll describe those positions in a few minutes. And then a request for some additional professional services to support our work on projects. This is a hybrid approach, some staff, some out-of-house contractual services to meet those needs. Our goal in this proposal was to increase our staffing level to do more capital projects and to do them better and to add necessary staffing for our Signals Unit, which I'll spend a little bit of time on tonight. Also to keep in place some incentives for our newest hires and to help reduce the burnout and boost our ability to retain employees. We're also seeking to backfill a bunch of vacancies and jumpstart design work with those contractual services and ultimately hope to transition those projects to our staff as our capacities increase. Our Signals Unit provides a really good example, I think, of how work has changed in our community. As we have advanced in our use of technology, as we have responded to trends and best practices and attempted to provide additional features in our community, our assets in our Signals Unit have grown exponentially. Our staffing has not. Our staffing has been relatively flat for the last, has been flat for the last 15 years and relatively flat for the last 20. One of the things I wanted to point out to all of you is the impact of this staffing level. Our two individuals in this unit have worked a substantial amount of overtime, over 850 combined hours of overtime last year, and that trend is continuing this year. On the engineering side of the house, we also have a substantial workload. 59 significant capital and non-capital projects. Our engineers do more than just capital projects. They are involved in shaping policy, responding to community emergent needs, and much more. It's a significant investment that we ask them to caretake and to drive forward. We have nine people who are responsible for project management in this division. We started most and ended most of 2022 with five individuals out of those nine. We were briefly up to eight for a short period of time this year, and then we lost one of those individuals. This is a critical moment for our engineering division. We not only have a huge portfolio to manage and are eager to get all of that work done, but we've had an added catalyst to drive us toward that performance level, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act bundle of projects that we have committed to. Those have a finite timetable, and the city's made an obligation to complete those projects. This is just an example on the transportation side of engineering. I did a comparison. There are a lot of surveys going on across the region because Issaquah is not alone in its shortage of engineers or capital project managers. It's a very, very tight market, as I laid out in the agenda bill. But this is how we stack up. We have fewer transportation engineers per project than some of our comparison cities that I was able to get data from. And this proposal tonight would help close some of that gap, but not completely close it. I've proposed an additional position that would be responsible for helping to oversee our overall capital program. And I'm differentiating between that and capital project management, specific to one, two, three projects. This position would be able to focus on needed improvements for the overall program. Our project and division managers simply don't have time to do that, work as they manage their projects or manage the staffing within the division. So the improvements that I hope this position will bring is more robust planning processes, developing and utilizing performance metrics and tools, increasing our inter- and intra-departmental and inter-agency coordination, seeking additional grant funding, driving procedural changes that could enhance our on-time, on-scope, on-budget success. And it's not uncommon for a city our size or with a portfolio the size that we have to have individuals that are dedicated not just to the capital projects themselves, but to the overall program management. We have been working over the last several months to try to put into practice some other ways of managing the workload. We have, in some cases, reassigned some duties, tried to match up skill sets a little bit better, share the workload across other divisions, or in some cases, even other departments. And we are trying to become more efficient, improving our processes. In addition, as you've seen in this agenda bill, we are delaying a few projects, and we hope to also get some external help on these projects. We believe that the solution to our resource crunch requires more than one solution. In the proposal, I have spelled out a handful of projects that we are delaying. We applied criteria across all projects, utilities projects, transportation projects, in order to assess whether they could be candidates to delay so that we could focus on making sure we got the remainder of the projects done and done well. So we assessed each project for a variety of factors, including its risk and urgency, grant timing or other fixed requirements, whether the project's delay would cause harm to any other project or a time-sensitive subsequent phase of that same project, what phase each project was in, and whether the work was already in progress. For example, if we'd already put it out to bid early this year or if we have already entered into a contract for the work. In addition, we always look to see if there are In addition, we always look to see if there are overlaps with projects that help us to use public dollars more wisely, so utility projects are oftentimes coupled with road improvement projects. In addition, we looked at how likely we were to be able to complete the scoped work in 2023 and whether the project was solely supported by city funds. All of those gave us a sense of whether we could move forward easily with the project or whether they might be candidates for delay. In addition to the handful of projects that we are planning to delay, we have proposed that we use some outside services to help us to manage a few other projects. In particular, we prioritize getting some help on those ARPA projects so that we can make sure that we hit the timetables associated with those projects. The summary is also in your packet. This shows the four positions that we are requesting, identifies that we will, if need be, use a relocation incentive to help get engineers to come to Issaquah if we need to. It also lists where we expect to spend those professional services dollars, a split between utility projects and transportation projects. Funding sources for this ask come from a variety of sources. The first, on the general fund side, are from repurposing the budget that was to be used for a local government management fellow, which was a two-year position. The second was to reallocate the Gilman Boulevard Planning Funds in order to get capital projects in the general fund done. And that, both of those sources result in approximately $586,000 in the 2023 need and provide the funding to cover that 2023 need. In addition, we have taken a look at the utility fund health, and we believe that the utility funds can support the estimated costs in 2023 and 2024 for the requests that's before you this evening. As the City Administrator mentioned, a budget amendment will be required to shift the dollars between the various funds, many funds involved here, storm, sewer, water, street, in order to support those new requests. And so we'll come back to you with that budget amendment. In addition, the delay of the stormwater capital projects would temporarily fund the stormwater position portion of the new requests and also return a small amount to the stormwater fund balance that could be used to support those delayed projects in the future. So our next steps would be to come back to you with that funding plan spelled out in the form of a budget amendment and the salary ordinance revision. We would then move forward with executing those professional services agreements. We have recruitments underway for positions that are already open, existing positions. We would hope to fill those positions, whether they're new or existing vacancies by July, and then we would hope to transition the franchise management back in-house toward the end of the year. Ultimately, we hope to transition all those capital projects that we were using out-of-house services on back to our staff after we are fully staffed, and hopefully by this year's This was a hybrid proposal, where we have requested some additional staff and some additional funding for professional services. One of the alternatives certainly could be to allocate more funding for those contractual services. It doesn't completely negate the need for staff to oversee those contracts, but we could talk about the balance between those requests. There's an option as well to meet the existing resources by delaying additional capital projects or canceling them. And then our third option, that's an option but not a preferred option, would be to direct staff or our contractor to spend less time scrutinizing those franchise applications that have become more and more complex over time and do require a significant amount of time. Lastly, we could adjust service level expectations. We pride ourselves on being able to respond quickly when a traffic signal is out and not leave it in flash, for example, but that's not the way it's done everywhere. Again, not our preferred alternative, but one that could be considered. The Committee, Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, did recommend approving the additional requested positions in order to complete the capital projects, enhance capital program and franchise management, and improve the city's ability to handle its traffic signals. The committee also supported the allocation and use of professional services to ensure the delivery of projects while we're working hard to fill those vacancies. And the administration's recommendation is the same in your packet, to authorize those four FTEs and their associated budgets, and the professional services request of $410,000, and to make the adjustments in our salary ordinance and budgets to reflect those changes. And with that, I won't read the whole motion. I will pause and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Moon. So we have questions, and then after we do a few questions, I'm going to head over to Committee Chair Ray, and there may be additional questions, so Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the proposed next steps, it includes a delay projects and recruit positions in April. Recruiting and hiring is different than the folks that actually do the projects. Why do a delay?
Right, two actions in that bullet point. We have the projects under delay right now. We have not allocated current staff toward working on those projects in order to focus their time on all of the others. In addition to continuing with that action, we would spend our time trying to recruit for those open positions. Did that answer your question?
There's no, so whatever is delayed at the moment, there's no option that involves getting going on things that are currently being delayed. Things that are delayed are going to be delayed regardless of which option we choose.
Yes, this is more our staff letting you know we've taken that action. If you would like to see us advance those projects, then we certainly will need more resources, more resources beyond what is spelled out in your packet this evening.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Council President?
Thank you. I know you mentioned that, you know, some of this is about reallocating workload, both as a way to retain employees and, you know, just right-size their workload. Can you give any indication about, like, what portion of this is about increasing our capacity to get work done versus doing things like hiring somebody else so that we're limiting overtime, which isn't really necessarily increasing our capacity? Do you have any sense of that balance?
Well, currently, the only place where we have authorized overtime, the only place where we can, is for the hourly folks that work in the Signals Unit. That's the only opportunity that we have to get the work done right now. On our exempt staff side, you're right, we have taken a bunch of different steps to try to right-size the work that's on their plate in order to retain them, keep them functioning at a high level on the projects that they need to focus on. I, I think we have tried to do the calculus, it's a little bit of art and a little bit of science, I think, to try to analyze, how many hours does each project require? We do that sort of work to project plan, and then to look at how many engineers we have available to put toward those tasks. It's been complicated because we can't just look at our authorized staffing level. We actually have to look at, who do we have right now able to get the work done? And that has been a challenge for us because we haven't been able yet, we've made significant progress, but we haven't been able to fill every seat.
Let me ask it maybe a different way, because I appreciate all of those details, but would you say in many ways that the additional FTEs that you're suggesting here are more about reallocating work between people, whereas the services contract is about increasing capacity?
Thank you for that. I would say that additional staff will help alleviate current load on our existing engineers. The projects that we are targeting for external help, we have set aside at this moment in time. We may be taking small steps to try to get those projects going, but they aren't getting all the time and attention that they need, and so the professional services will add capacity in order to put those projects back on track.
City Administrator?
Let me just add that we're trying to do many things at one time, and I think the professionals, the last part of what Director Moon said, is the immediate impact of that. Having those three additional engineers, two additional engineers, one project manager will allow us to increase capacity. The traffic signal issue, I think is a separate one, but anytime you're spending the large amount of overtime that you're spending, having another full-time position just makes a lot of sense. So that almost travels separate than the other three. But once those other three are there, plus we're the ability to keep folks, that's been a huge challenge. As Director Moon said, there's some incentive programs previously authorized by the council and the mayor that we're using here. We've extended, for example, the retention bonuses that we have for those employees that were with us at the end of last year to those that we hired at the beginning of this year. There were two engineers that we extended that to. So it's these multiple trains. So keep the folks we have, keep the new folks we've just hired, have the ability to hire a few more, but also then have contract work to support all that while all the rest are coming into place. That's the strategy.
Councilmember Ray?
I have a question for the City Administrator, and at the beginning of this presentation, you talked about the potential to delay this decision till our April 17 meeting. What would that look like, and what would, what would be the advantage, disadvantage to do in that?
Since the Agenda Packet was released, we've, we've talked with members of the council, particularly Councilmember Hunt, who raised questions about the impacts on projects that would not be worked on in order to come up with the funding, in order to move this project forward. So since those were newer questions, and also the way this agenda item was prepared, there is no action before the council other than general direction. The action as far as amending the budget and amending the salary resolution traditionally comes at a later point. It's not unusual for the council to take a policy action and then have the actual function of that come through a vote later on, and so we wanted to be accommodating to the questions that were raised by members of the council today. We don't think that there is a material impact. We will continue moving forward with recruitment of the positions unless we get a sense from the council that that's not something you wish to do. Certainly, the support of the committee made us feel that this was a package that would have supported the full council. So we don't believe that two weeks is going to have a significant impact. If the council otherwise is comfortable with what you have before you this evening, we're certainly not going to stop you from, from doing that. But this is a big change. When you go through budget, especially our first biennial budget, we would hope that the package of staffing that we have is sufficient. We've gone through lots of changes in Public Works. We stopped our capital program for almost two years because of the pandemic. These are unique circumstances, and we wanted to be respectful to any member of the council who said, well, wait a second, I want a little bit more time to completely understand all the impacts of this package.
Let me follow up. This is, I'm just trying to understand kind of mechanically, it's a little different than we've done in the past. So maybe this is a city clerk question about, so what's the path forward? Because if we want to get input from the council as a whole, we should do that tonight, right?
Correct.
So, and to do that, we really need to have a motion on the floor, would be my thinking, correct?
Certainly. I mean, so we would, if the council would like to go with the original motion, you can. Again, with the conversations we've had with Councilmember Hunt over the last day or so, the administration is comfortable with the item being delayed two weeks.
Yeah, it seems to me that we should go with the proposed motion, and if, as a result of the discussion this evening, we determine that we need more time, then we can, at that point, move to continue it, correct?
Certainly.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of this one, because it's a little bit different.
It is a little bit different. More questions? Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Committee Chair Ray, if you want to provide some input from the meeting that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee had.
Thanks, Mayor Pauli, I appreciate that. I've been so anxious to do this, it's way early in the meeting, so I'm glad I finally get my moment. We rely on Public Works a lot in this city. We rely on them to keep things running, we rely on them to maintain things, and we rely on them very much to enhance our existing infrastructure. As Director Moon pointed out, the city has grown a fair bit, and our infrastructure has expanded, and we have not kept up with that growth in terms of the number of people we have in our Public Works Department. So to ensure that we continue to thrive as a city, we have to be able to, you know, operate what we have, we have to be able to maintain what we have, and we have to be able to deliver on a fairly extensive list of capital projects that, that are really important to, to this community. And it's been challenging, and I think it's fair to say it's been frustrating for everybody because we want to do good and we want to get this stuff done, and then there are just those limitations that people have. They're, you know, they have to sleep and, and things like that. So the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee was, was, was very supportive of this plan that was developed by Public Works and Director Moon, felt that it really better positioned us for success in the future, both by, in the short term, providing professional services to get us over the hump, and then recruiting for the longer-term staffing needs. And so, coming out of committee, it was very much thought that this was a reasonable and a prudent and probably the right thing to do going forward. So I'm anxious to hear everyone's perspective on this, and I guess I would look to my fellow committee members to see if there's anything that I missed or you'd like to add to that.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Maybe just a couple more things. You know, we also talked about this, or during feedback, just kind of talked about how this is really more of a systemic problem that we're facing here in Issaquah, giving some feedback about, well, what can Issaquah be doing more through our legislative affairs and lobbying to help promote and support workforce development efforts at the state and in the region? Also, talking about how this council, in particular, we have very high expectations, lofty goals for our capital projects, rightfully so. We're at this stage in the development of our city, which will define how we grow into a medium and then large-sized city, so capital projects are very important. So we appreciated the reality setting that Director Moon came to committee and helped us through understanding that. I feel like there was one other thing I was going to say, and I've forgotten it. But if I remember it, I'll bring it up during comments. But again, the council is very appreciative of the staff who came and talked about this, understanding that this is a very difficult thing to do, especially us as budget makers and policymakers, we want to be doing everything. We want to be doing everything excellent, and there are things beyond our control that pull the strings for us. So we just need to make sure to realize that as a council and support our staff when they're telling us that they're struggling. So, thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Yes, I think that we were, at least I was, and I'm sure my fellow councilmembers were too, very, very impressed by the professional analysis that we received, and very grateful for the fact that it wasn't a one, you know, one, what would they call that, a one pony proposal? But many different aspects and a really thoughtful allocation of work and service contracts and, and then delaying some projects. And it, it seemed... And it seemed, and the discussion was, that each one of those options had been thoroughly vetted, and there was a great deal of really good thought behind the proposal. So we did unanimously support this coming forward to the full council for approval. We wanted it to be on the regular agenda because it is a big, big ask. But Mayor Polly and Councilmember Joe and I were with a group of young people a while ago, and we got the question, you know, what's the most difficult thing or the most challenging thing you have as a council member? My response was balancing all the things that we need to do with making sure that our fiscal house is in order. And sometimes that means we lean this way or we lean that way. But as a city, our job is to provide services for our people, and I believe that this is a fiscally responsible proposal that will allow us to provide the services that we need to provide to the people of Issaquah. So I thoroughly support it. I do want to say that I wanted to thank Councilmember Hunt for the many good questions she had, and I am quite willing to, if there's no, you know, impact on the work and the recruiting, I'm willing to wait till the next meeting to give final approval, but I will support this proposal. Thank you.
So maybe we could get that motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion. I moved authorize $410,000 in professional services funding for the Public Works project and franchise management assistance, and authorized following new positions, one FTE signal technician, one FTE senior engineer slash capital projects manager for your utilities engineering, one senior engineer slash capital projects manager for transportation engineering, and one FTE capital program and franchise manager, and direct the human resources director to revise the salary ordinance to add the new classification for the capital program and franchise manager, and direct the chief financial officer to bring a subsequent 2023, 2024 budget amendment to fund the professional services and additional positions.
Oops, second.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele is seconding. Is there any council discussion? Council President?
Thank you. This one is difficult for me because I hear all of the need, and I want everything out of that. I want our staff members to not have to work overtime. I want our staff members to not have double the projects that other cities have. I want additional project capacity. My two major concerns when I come down to this is, one, that we're making a rather large decision about a single department in a vacuum, and we're not really with this proposal able to consider it related to other department needs, or even whether our future year revenues will be able to support this type of staffing. So that's my first concern. My second concern is the funding mechanisms here. There, and I think this goes back to this whole concept of, we've been kind of frustrated about some of the communication that's come back from the administration saying, we don't have the staff capacity for that, we don't have the staff capacity, and I get that. But here we're presented with a suggestion of projects to delay, and while you've said, you know, we went through this huge analysis of, you know, whether the project would conflict with something else, or, you know, had adjacencies and all of those things, but I'm not seeing that. I'm only being given the proposed projects. And so I think there's really some policy decisions for us to make here about what are the projects we should be delaying, you know? And it has to come with the input of, what's our staff capacity, absolutely. But in a way, we made budgetary decisions to prioritize certain projects, but we didn't rank those in order of 1 to 50, and you guys are, you know, chopping off the bottom. You've made a decision, or you've made a recommendation, and I appreciate those, but I think we need to have all of the information on the table, and we need to make educated decisions, not only potentially about public works staffing and the capacity to do projects, but in some of the other areas where we're kind of facing that same idea. So, yes, I want to say yes to all of this. I just, I think it's very difficult to get a $1.8 million request while not being able to look at the full, big picture of what are all of our needs in the city, you know? Is our police department at the right staffing levels? Is our planning department going to be able to take the necessary steps with Title 18? You know, we're being told the future updates list, we're not going to be able to handle that necessarily. So that's the problem I have in looking at this, is yes and. And I have to make those decisions for our entire citizens and our entire residents, our business community, all of that. And I think this is very difficult to make that with this information. So I will throw that to my fellow councilmembers to see if anybody has any thoughts and responses on that, because I would like to get to yes, but I want to be able to do so in a manner that understands all of the decisions that we're making. Because ultimately, when we make a decision to say yes to this, we're making a decision to say no to something else. That's not on the table right now, but it ultimately is the decision that we're making, not only for this budget year, but also potentially for future budget years. Because it's much harder to say, no, we want to eliminate a staff position here that's already been allocated if we come into a future budget year and we say, well, revenue's flat, but we want to increase all of our staffing because we made that mid-year budget decision. So those are the issues that I am facing in making these types of decisions tonight.
Thank you for that, Council President, and thank you for so clearly stating it all. This is why your professional staff struggles, because they do it with the bigger picture in mind. I believe Councilmember Hunt would also like to comment, and then anyone else who wants to raise their microphone would be great. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I appreciate and agree with the comments that Council President Walsh just made, and I too understand, and I think it has justified the need for the additional staff positions in Public Works. And I think there's a lot of information about that and about comparing to other cities, and I appreciate also the work of the committee that looked at that and also felt that it was a justified increase for those positions so that we can do more of our capital improvement projects. My issues and why I think it would be good for us as a policymaking body to consider this again at a different meeting to take final action are two things. The first one is that the motion before us directs the administration to make a future budget amendment, and within that budget amendment, it's implied that there will be certain changes to the budget that affect the timeline of important projects. And my issues are not so much with the, or are not with the increases to the staffing levels. My concern is with those changes to the timelines of important projects. For example, we have a Laughing Jacobs Creek project there that, very important for Coconee as the Seamen Recovery Council member on this council team and as a member of the Coconee Management Interlocal Working Group member. That's a really important project. And we also don't yet know if we will have a state match, which we will know in June. So I would like to see, as Council President Walsh just said, the work has been done to look at all of the options for what we could, what else we could consider for changes to the project timeline to make this pencil out. I would like to see those because I think that would better equip us to make this policy decision and to take into account all of the different ramifications that it will have, including changes to important project timelines. So that's my first issue, is really just that we're directing the administration, and it will come back as a budget amendment, but my concerns are really with those things that will happen in that subsequent step. So I would like to consider it all as one package. I think that's better policymaking. And then my second concern is that of the projects that are delayed, that we did budget, there is a fish habitat one that's important for fish habitat, and then there's an emergency access culvert one that's important for a neighborhood emergency access, and then there's this Coconee project that is super important for Coconee, which we really do have, I believe, a deep obligation to protect. And I would like to see all of the other options. It's listed in our packet that there could be other options that we could delay, but we don't really have the information to see that at this time. So that would be my ask, to have that information, we can have that discussion and fully understand the implications of this decision with that additional information. So I would ask that we consider the full package at our next meeting, especially also since the administration has said there's no material concern that they have about that two weeks, and as I said, I think it will make for better policymaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the concerns that our Council President and Councilmember Hunt have brought up. I'm going to support the bill as proposed this evening. These things are, I mean, we have a capital plan. Let's get going on our capital plan. I'm excited that the organization is to a point where it feels it can make use. You know, we've had so many things over the last couple of years where the administration basically has said, look, we need more time to get things in place, but now we're at a point where a major element of our plans, we're ready to get moving. I have concerns about delaying this at all. The market, it's hard to hire people. In my day job, I spend all my time trying to hire talented people, so I think we should just get going. Thanks.
Thanks. Looking for additional, oh, Deputy Council President Hall?
Sure, yeah. I support the policy as is, as we talked about at committee, but I have no problem with moving it to a future meeting if we want to get into it a bit more. I do have some concerns, just for council, about how deep our role when it comes to evaluating projects by projects is. Public administrators exercise and use judgment around staffing, resources, management, and all that every day. That influences policymaking. So I would just make sure, you know, if this does come back to us and we do have kind of a more comprehensive view of it, that we, as a council, stay high-level and policy-focused and moving forward in that way. But again, if the administration doesn't have any problems with waiting a few weeks to take this back up again, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Ray?
I have a couple of questions that this conversation has spawned, and they really are kind of going back to a little bit of my procedural thing. What would we do in the next two weeks? Because it seems like there's two questions around the table. One is, if we add these additional resources to Public Works, is there something else that we're going to forego? So that's one question that we need to answer. So that's a question for the administration. The second question is, what were the criteria that were used to decide which projects to delay so that we can understand the logic behind that? Because I know at committee, we went through that, and it was a fairly complex, linear programming kind of model of trade-offs. So can I get, Emily, you to at least talk to the kind of the rubric for decisions on what to delay, and then also then questions about how do we deal with, and this is probably a Wally question, how do we deal with the larger resource management question?
And Mayor is going to chime in a little bit first. You've got too many questions in there, Councilmember Ray, I'm sorry. Definitely, the city administrator can talk about the bigger picture of staffing, and definitely our Public Works Director can talk about the logic or rationale that was used to do project selection, and it is complicated for 19 different reasons. But I do want to point out that you have two different decisions here tonight. One is about staffing, and a second one that would be coming in two weeks, that is about resourcing. And it is appropriate for you to divide those into two questions. Tonight, you're voting on staffing and directing us to prepare a budget amendment, but you get to review, approve that budget amendment. And so I'm not sure how intricately these are linked, but I will let people smarter than me answer that. And Councilmember Mertz, if you wanted to just chime in before the questions get answered?
Yeah, I think I might have a point of order, because we actually, we have a motion on the floor, and I think that the request on subsequent information is presuming an amendment to modify the motion that's on the floor? No?
No.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Not yet. Questions, I think just questions.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, I'm reacting, quite honestly, to some of the comments I heard, and I don't know how to answer them because I need some, I have some questions.
We'll get some more information on the table. I don't think there's been an amendment to the motion proposed yet. So let's start with city administrator. Let's talk big picture. This is a very unusual situation to be bringing a Public Works Director in post-budget, but then to task them with doing a strategic review of resources, projects, and coming back to council with a pretty difficult picture. Are you planning to do this with other departments?
No, not tomorrow. I mean, I think over the long period of time, it's important to look at departments. There is not another one in the hopper. Public Works has been a real focus of our energies, really since my arrival here, believe it or not, three and a half years ago. I'll just say, in a more broad sense, you know, the staff doesn't like to disappoint you and the community. And I think for the last several years, the staff, the engineering staff, public work staff, has worked tirelessly to get projects out the door. For lots of different reasons, that hasn't happened, and they've been very frustrated. They're frustrated to come back and tell you during the budget cycle, we did whatever percent of what was budgeted. And they don't like to make excuses. And so when Director Moon came here, you know, one of the requests the mayor and I had of her was, you know, do an honest assessment. Is this, is this a people problem? Is this a process problem? Is it a resource problem? What is this? And I think as the committee heard and as you've heard this evening, you know, we've documented some resource issues. We could wait until the changes to the biennial budget in the fall and share all this with you then. We decided, no, that doesn't make any sense, because then we're just going to be coming back to you in the fall saying, we've missed the mark again. We know why we're missing the mark, we want to move forward and make those changes. One of the challenges, however, though, in making those changes in mid-year without an influx of resources from outside of the budget, is you have to make adjustments. And Director Moon can share with you in a moment the rigor that she put every project through to make some decisions. What we came up with was there were some projects that we weren't getting traction on for a variety of reasons, and we felt comfortable shifting some of those resources. And again, Director Moon can probably go back to those four projects specifically and speak to that. So there are no right answers here. However, when Councilmember Hunt and Council President Walsh raised some questions over the last day or so, I mean, these are legitimate policy questions. I don't think the mayor, myself, Director Moon, felt we could just reject them out of hand. We felt it was important if the body wanted more time, this is a big deal. Two weeks is not going to break this. But not to say we didn't do a really good job in the first place. We think we've got a pretty methodical process, which I'll let Director Moon speak to now. But that's sort of the bigger picture. There are no other departments in the offing, you know, certainly as you look down the road, there certainly are always other municipal issues we're going to have to deal with. But we're not going to come back in two weeks and say, you know, let's have a deep discussion about Parks and Community Services. That's not, not.
Well, either the city administrator or Director Moon, there is another part of the question from Councilmember Ray, which is, what would happen in those two weeks? So, you know, do we just come back and you get the same information and?
Well, so what we would do is... Well, so what we would do is, we've heard from Councilmember Hunt, we've heard from Council President Walsh about some concerns. You know, are there opportunities? I think, if I can get maybe more specific, the Laughing Jacob's?
Laughing Jacobs Groups.
Not Jacob's Ladder, Laughing Jacob's.
It's not Jacob's Ladder.
You know, there may be an opportunity to say, okay, if the council feels very strongly about this, here's an opportunity to take money from somewhere else in the city to put that in there. That probably is the only other adjustment we think we would make, other than saying, maybe there's some REIT money that you could spend on lots of other things you might be able to put in here. If the council really felt strongly, we felt, in talking with the mayor this afternoon, an obligation that if the council wants to take two weeks, we're happy to provide that information. But there's not going to be a lot of wild changes. The path's a pretty narrow one.
Director Moon?
Thank you. So I heard two questions. I heard criteria for project selection, and I can review that again if that's desired. I did want to be very clear about where we are. It is April. We have not been sitting around for the last, you know, three months plus. You adopted the budget even before the end of the calendar year. We made plans in terms of allocating projects to different staff members, and we had to get projects put out to bid. We had to start working on collaboration with other entities and across departments. And so I want to be clear that we had to make some choices early in this year, knowing what our staffing level was. We've made those choices. We've identified the projects that we have put on delay. We've identified the projects that we need extra resources in order to successfully complete or get underway this year. Many of those projects are two-year projects. We therefore have limited ability to pick other projects at this moment in time to delay in 2023. It's a two-year budget. We could look toward 2024, pick out some initial phase, you know, design phase or conceptual planning phase projects, or better candidates for delay in 2024. We have the ability to put contracts on pause. There's risks in doing that. The projects that we would naturally turn to, I think, would be our rehab projects, taking care of our existing infrastructure, because those are annual programs, and we can, we can move work around. That is not something we'd like to do. It's precisely the thing we're trying to avoid and get better at. But I just wanted to be really clear about where we are in this moment. The projects that we were able to resource, we have resourced, we have gotten underway in various shapes and forms. Having said that, the criteria that we used is a very messy matrix of criteria. We don't just look at 2023 either. We have to look at our full capital plan and think about the relationships between projects and across funds. But some of those criteria, as I mentioned before, have to do with safety. Is there a risk, a sense of urgency around this project because of safety concerns? Do we have grants that we need to complete this project or milestones on this project in order to receive that grant funding? Is there a subsequent phase of this project that is also time-sensitive, and therefore we need to get underway with an earlier phase now in order to hit that deadline? As I said previously, we often look at projects that have not yet commenced, that may be in the conceptual or design phase, may be easier to slow those down. We may not have a construction bid in hand that we want to execute right away. So those are some other things that we look at. We look at whether or not we're going to be able to complete that work. Is there some other factor? Is there a delay in materials on a particular job that we know is going to push us into 2024 anyway? We look, we look at a host of factors, and then we try to decide, is this a project that we can successfully complete with our resources today and that we must complete this year? Or did it go on a candidate list for consideration for delay? If it went on that list, then we try to strategize. What are other ways that we could get it done? And as the city administrator mentioned, Laughing Jacobs Creek could be one of these. The primary reason Laughing Jacobs Creek is on the list today is because we did not receive the grant that we applied for. We may receive a second round of that grant, and we may be given notice of that in June. And then at that point in time, if we got the grant, and if we had some additional resources in order to backfill the project management function, then we may be able to get underway, albeit still a little later than we would have had we received the grant notice last year.
Okay, Councilmember Ray. I thought you had three questions in there. I thought you had two. Did you get the answers that you needed?
I don't know how many questions I had, but I got them answered. That was, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking around for a second round of questions. Before we go to the second round, we have heard from five of our council members. I just wanted to give a chance to two we have not heard yet before we go for a second round. Councilmember DeMichele and Councilmember Joe. Did you have any questions before we go to the second round? Okay, great. Council President?
Thank you. I really appreciate the information on the criteria, and I probably should have looked up the committees, all of the information given to the committee when that question came up as well. What I'm hearing is maybe that we're kind of in a hard place because some of those decisions have already been made about which projects to continue work on, given the resources in the beginning of the year. And also that there was a lot of evaluation and decision-making used for that. So I can accept that area. The, the other area that I'm still having trouble with, I think, is if I was looking at an entire budget and making decisions about where I felt like we needed staffing, if I got this information, I might say, and I also got the information from human services and police and planning and all of that, I might make the decision to do fewer capital projects. In my mind, the Title 18 future updates, super, super important. Having staffing for the Motel 6 project that isn't really happening right now, super, super important. And so I am still struggling with making a decision about a, one department's needs without looking at other departments and what those needs are for the full of our city. I think additionally, I am concerned about what our future revenue looks like. If we're adding these, these staffing commitments on, we made a decision in our previous budget cycle that our revenue could support a certain number of staff and projects and operations costs. And now we're making a decision to add almost $1 million per year worth of staffing costs without saying that we necessarily have the revenue for that in a future budget year. Yes, I appreciate that we're looking at this and saying, we can, you know, not do some projects and have that money and utilize all of that for this current budget amendment. But we're still not looking at that 2025 budget and saying, we're going to have the revenue to support these positions at that time when it comes up, because we didn't have that money when we made the decision on budget previously. Otherwise, I would have said, let's put another person in planning for, you know, Title 18 future updates, or we would have said, do we have the right staffing for IPD? So I'm still struggling with that. This is a difficult policy decision to make in a vacuum.
And Council President, thank you for that. You know, we would never, as a professional organization, come and ask you to pit one department's needs against another. So we would never come and say, if you're going to do this, you know, you have to pick if it's going to be police officers or firefighters or this. So part of what the team is doing is trying to present you this very unusual request, but also doing it within that broad scope that I think you're asking for. So it's, if it feels uncomfortable, this is uncomfortable. It really is. But we, as a team, try to make sure that we have evaluated and present to you a proposed staffing plan that we think will get the work done. So not sure, like, when you do your wonderful retreats with your council priorities, that's what we try and bring you back. So I would hope that we aren't giving you the impression that we would ever shortchange one group over another.
No, and I'll just respond to that. I don't think we are necessarily shortchanging any group, or that you would try to pit departments against each other. But ultimately, budget decisions are about making decisions and evaluations between different needs. And so that is a super, super important part of our job in evaluating that budget. And so right now, yes, I'm seeing the need in Public Works. I am absolutely seeing that. But I also know in the back of my head, there's all these other areas that are super important as needs for the city. And that's, that's the play that's happening for me.
Thanks. I think that's Councilmember DeMichele.
Is it appropriate to comment rather than ask the question, or are we still asking questions?
You're in the motion. I think comments are great.
Okay, I'm going to try and say this as delicately and diplomatically as I can. But I think we have a director now that brings, and that's what I was trying to say, deep professional ability to analyze situations. And we may not have had that when we were working on our budget. And now we have it. And we have a person who has presented us with a proposal that has been worked on not only by herself, but by our whole department. And I just want to say that perhaps we didn't have the full information when we were doing the budget. And now we have a much clearer picture. End of comment. I don't think I want to say anything else besides that. I
Very diplomatic. Let's, we are in the comment section, so Councilmember Ray had some questions, but this is a time for you to make your comments if you'd like. Councilmember Ray?
You sure? Okay. So one of the things that really became clear in the discussion we had in infrastructure was how much infrastructure debt we have in the city of Issaquah. And every day that we don't address that is a day that that debt gets deeper, and it's going to be harder to dig out. And so, so we need, I think we need to move forward with putting a team together that can move us forward. So I really appreciate Council President's comments about positions, particularly the out-year funding. That was actually my, my biggest question was, great, we got this year covered, and maybe next year, but what about the out-years? I think that's a legitimate question that we're going to have to, we're going to have to solve for. But I also believe that that's something we can, we can do. And I also believe that it's the job of the administration to come back to us. I mean, I don't think that this was, this is the first of a trickle of, and now we need two police officers, and now we need four, you know. So I think that the administration made a determination, said, this is really what's on fire. This is where we need help if we're going to meet, meet our goals. So I think that, so these positions make sense to me. And then, you know, it's funny, but when I look at the motion, it doesn't talk about the prioritization of projects at all. I mean, that's really kind of an operational decision. And, and I got to rely on our Public Works to understand what our priorities are, but then to manage the sequencing of projects in such a way that makes the most sense. Because managing a program, which is why I'm excited about your program manager, managing a program is different than managing a project, because you need to look at how all these things interact. And so I think it's reasonable for us to give guidance on, we like this, and we admire than that. But I think I want Public Works to operate these things as a program and to really to bring together the interdependencies and the funding streams and the resources in a package that gets us the most with what we have right now. So you guys are professionals at it. I got to rely on you, recognizing that we have our, our priorities. So I think this is the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do tonight. I'm, I'm ready to kind of move forward with this.
Thanks. I have two more speakers. I'm going to go first to Councilmember Joe, who has not made a comment yet, and then back to Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I'll stress that the transportation engineering comparison slide that came up that showed, you know, that we put quite a burden on our Issaquah employees in terms of 3.83 projects as opposed to 2.22, which is the average. We also put a great burden on them in terms of the amount of money that they're kind of responsible for. $6.3 million is kind of their responsibility for the value of the projects that they're working on. And the value of projects per 1,000 population is not, almost $1 million. My point is that we have been demanding quite a bit from our Public Works employees, and we need to be cognizant of burnout and working them to a point where they go elsewhere, right? And I think that I don't see in the near future a great supply of engineers coming out, such that we are going to be having too many engineers in our department with turnover and just the way that the market is out in the next five or 10 years. I think we're going to be lucky to have what we have. And the administration has really done a great job with Director Moon to put a, a package together that kind of does the very best with what we have, as Councilmember Ray points out, and gives us the best chance for success to achieve some of the goals that the council has said are important. The projects picked and how they're done, you know, is not necessarily in the purview of the council. We're going to rely on our professional staff to do that, and I'll be supporting the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. I believe everybody's had a chance to speak, but I'm going to go back to Councilmember Hunt and then make my way around the table again. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will go ahead and make a motion to continue this conversation to April 17.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Second. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. It's always challenging to make, to make an argument about, that's, that sort of hinges on a procedural thing. But I do think, actually, this one is really important. I think we have an opportunity to consider the budget amendment with, as the implications of the decision at the same time. And I've, in the past, you know, sometimes we've directed the finance administrator to make decisions or to make amendments, and then it comes back, and there have been changes to, to the budget that then, you know, I have to, that then have to be considered sort of separately, but they had sort of also already been given direction on by the council. And that, for me, has been really difficult. And this is an opportunity that's supported by the administration to actually consider the amendment with the policy decision about increasing the staffing levels. And we can't do that tonight, but we could do that in two weeks. And there's not a material difference according to the administration. So we're a policymaking body, and for me as a policymaker, I really think that that's a big step in the right direction to consider the policy, to consider the budget amendment with the policy decision about increasing the staffing levels. As I said before, my issue is really with the changes to the projects. I do believe we have, and, and the reason that we have, will have to consider the budget amendment is because we, as a council, do have oversight over changing the money and changing the funding that goes into these projects. And we did approve a budget that included, for example, the Laughing Jacobs Creek project. So for that reason, I do think we have the purview to, to, to make, to make judgments about the different priorities that we want to include in the budget. Salmon and Kocane, very important. It's been so It's been said that if we got that grant, perhaps we could then have staffing resources to do that project. I would like to have that as part of the agenda bill, and to have that information in front of us, so we could consider it as a package. So, I, I make this motion to consider that full package, and again, because I have a serious concern about the project timeline. And as a salmon, as a city that so values salmon, and especially coconie, which we really do have an obligation to support, because this is a very endangered population, very few habitat places, I can't support that without, I can't support this bill because of that as an implied issue. But I feel like in two weeks, we can have more consideration of that with potential other options. And I would appreciate my fellow councilmembers giving that two weeks, so we could consider that full package. Thank you.
So, a couple mics go up and down. I'm not sure if it was Councilmember DeMichele or Councilmember Mertz. Yep. I just couldn't see who went first. So, you can defer to, okay. Councilmember Mertz, followed by Councilmember DeMichele.
Respectfully, I'm going to oppose the amendment. I don't really want to get into a project-by-project analysis. I think the administration, you know, we've had things over the last couple of years where we've had, where the administration's had to come back and be like, hey, we were going to work on this thing, we didn't get to work on it this year. So, instead, we're talking about small delays, and the administration's already given a rationale on it. I don't see a budget assessment in two weeks that's going to fundamentally change, this is, you know, three FTEs out of a, what, 250 FTE organization, thereabouts. We have a plan. This is not, it's not like we, it's not the administration coming to us with a pickup opportunity that we didn't know that we had two weeks ago, and there's some urgency to it. We have put a lot of time and effort into this capital plan. And so, and we've spent so much of the last three years being unable to do the things that we know we need to do as a city, and make the investments that we need to make. So, I am just excited about getting moving right now. So, thanks.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So, I will be supporting the motion, and I think we are on the path. We've been assured that things are going to move forward over the next two weeks while we're doing a little bit deeper dive. It sounds, if I, and please correct me, Councilmember Hunt, if I'm saying this incorrectly, but it sounds as though Councilmember Hunt would like us to consider putting Laughing Jacobs Creek back on the active list, and where we find the money to do that, perhaps having the administration come back with that proposal. And I have an additional question about it, if we're going to consider it, and that would be, how does this all relate, if at all, to the big culvert projects that we're going to have along I-90? And yes, we do want to support our coconies. So, I will be supporting it. I don't think that, from what I've heard tonight, that it is substantially going to delay the project if we take another two weeks to consider adding that one project back on the active list, and finding the funding to do that, or the resources to do that. So, I, again, I do support the motion, and next week, I plan to vote for it, but I, I don't see any downside to taking a couple of weeks to consider Councilmember Hunt's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I have a question for the city administrator and Public Works Director. These would come back as two separate motions, so there would be a budget adjustment under one motion, and the same motion we had here tonight. So, if there was no firm direction from the council on resourcing, we would still expect to have a vote on the staffing plan? Is that the, is that what you're thinking? Two different votes?
Well, I think if we're just continuing the motion that's on the floor, then it would be the motion that's on the floor. So, we would still be coming back at a future meeting beyond that with, with the staffing plan and the budget amendment.
As two separate votes?
That's right. And it would not be on the 17th.
It would not be on the 17th?
Would not be on the 17th. Am I correct? If, if we're continuing the motion that's on the floor, motion on the floor has us coming back at some future date with that. So, we would come back, though, and address the funding as it is currently before the council this evening. And so, we would make, and I think that Councilmember DeMichele is correct, that it's, that one project would be the one that we would focus on.
I guess what I'm trying to make sure is that before they take their vote, they really understand what they're voting on, which is, this motion would not bring items back in two weeks? Would not bring this back in two weeks?
Bring the item before the council, back in two weeks.
We, okay. This particular vote, and the budget adjustment?
It would just bring the item before you.
Just this one?
Right. And so, that motion is direct, the finance director to come back at a future meeting beyond that with a budget adjustment, and then the human resource director at a future meeting beyond that to do that. That's the motion on, that's currently being delayed. My city clerk, am I, are you following me? Okay.
Okay. And then, the second part to that is, is it clear to the city council of what information would be coming in the next two weeks?
So, my understanding from the discussion that the council's had, if this motion passes to continue the item, that the administration will go back and look at another funding plan, and bring that back to the council, different than the one that's currently before you.
And that's what I want to make sure before I call for the vote, is that you all understand what would happen in the next two weeks. So, Councilmember Ray?
I'm sorry. A funding plan, or a prioritization of initiatives plan? Because the funding plan is the funding plan, and I haven't heard anybody say, well, that's not true. I've, I've heard concern about some of the funding plan. But the thing that's driving the, the continuance isn't the funding plan, it's the thing that's not in the motion at all, which is about prioritization of, of initiatives. So, I, I continue to go back to, what are we going to do in the next two weeks if we, if we wait? I mean, I don't care about waiting so much, but I want to know, what are you going to do? So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ray, if the motion on the floor passes, in talking with Director Moon this afternoon, we were looking specifically at Laughing Jacobs Creek. And we believe, again, that grant has not been received. We are not, cannot do work on the project until the grant is received. If we receive the grant, the grant has a match. That match is being taken away in order to balance the package that's before you. So, we believe we would come back to the council, and the match plus a couple of other requirements is $175,000, correct?
Yes. The city match is $175,000, and then we would need additional project management support.
So, we would either come back to you and say, here's another project that we would say you don't, we aren't going to do in order to have that $175,000 if the grant happens. And that may be from fund balance, it may be from REIT, it may be from some other general source. We have no non-general fund source available to, oh, well, REIT would be a non-general fund source.
This would likely be from the Stormwater Fund as well.
From the Stormwater Fund. So, that's what we would do to come, because I don't believe, again, we've, in the work that we've done in the last day on this, there's a lot of other choices, quite honestly. But if the choice was that we needed to have Laughing Jacobs Creek move forward in order for the council to approve this plan, then we would find $175,000 to have just in case the grant happens. If the grant doesn't happen, we have no resources to move forward with this. It would remain in the budget, and hopefully, we would come up with another plan, probably as part of the 24 by any revision, to fund this project without the grant. That's, Councilmember Ray, that's the specific piece of this that we would work on over the next two weeks.
Councilmember Hunt?
I just wanted to make it clear that having that additional information is the intent of the motion, so I wanted to make sure that the motion would get us that information, but it sounds like it does, so thank you.
Any other comments before I call for the vote? Seeing none. Could you reread the motion for me, city clerk?
Sure. It's to continue this item to the April 17th, 2023 city council meeting.
So, the motion on the table is to continue this item to the April, hand in my own writing, 18th?
17th.
17th, 2020, 2023 city council meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Hunt, I didn't catch your vote. Three ayes and four nays, so the motion does not proceed. Back to the original motion that's on the table. Does anybody want to continue to speak to the motion? Deputy council, or, sorry, council president.
Thank you. So, I heard Councilmember Ray earlier talk about infrastructure debt, and that really was striking to me, and it kind of made me change my perspective on some of this. I think, I think much like our budgets in the past, and our CIP discussions in the past, have been very much a scarcity mindset. They've been a, we only have this bucket, and we have to make decisions between things. And I think that is exactly why we are reconsidering the CIP, including the funding sources. So, if I take that as part of my perspective on this, I think there's still the niggling question of, how do we manage these operation costs in the future? But it does give a different perspective on how we manage our CIP projects toward being able to complete the projects that our community relies on, that we decide our important priorities and all of that. And so, I was trying to fit all of these things into this past mindset or framework we've used for the budget, but we really are kind of transitioning toward this idea of, what are the projects? Now, let's figure out how the funding goes. And I think that, from my perspective, changes things around on this. So, at this point, I'm going to support this, and I look to having some future conversations about how we, how we work on those prioritizations, how we understand what all of the needs are in all of the departments and all of the project needs, so that we can better conceptualize this idea in the future.
Thank you, Council President. Any other comments before I call for the vote on the motion? City administrator.
Yes, thank you. There was another piece of Director Moon's presentation that kind of got passed over, and that is the future question. And I think you might want to expand upon this. We have not budgeted properly staff resources for a lot of these projects, that in some cases, the general fund has subsidized projects because we have not adequately billed the time of the individuals. And so, as we are working on 25, and, well, it's really 24, but 25 and beyond, that is a key change that public works staff is working on. So, the true cost of these projects will be represented with the appropriate staffing. And so, that means projects may increase in cost, but at least you're paying for it upfront, versus having the general fund subsidize it by staff that aren't being paid for by these projects. Is that a fair explanation?
It is. It's going to require a little bit of staff analysis to try to get the numbers correct, but indeed, we're going to go through an effort of trying to look at what staffing resources are needed on each project, and how can we cost account, do some project accounting back to the project's cost. This is not uncommon to index positions to projects and to reflect the staffing costs in the project budget, but we have not done that. As we develop the next CIP, we've already been in motion with that. I, I would anticipate we would need to come back and kind of have that conversation with you. There's a lot of movement between funds, and, and individual positions are split sometimes across five funds, so it's a little more complicated than it might seem.
And that's why I think, as Director Moon showed you, the costs associated with 23 and 24, because we figure by 25, we all have figured it out, maybe not completely for 24. So, that, as far as there's concern that you're adding costs to the future, you're adding costs to the myriad of projects and the myriad of funding sources, these are not going to be direct adds to the general fund. And we should, again, should have it pretty well figured out in time for budget for 25.
I'm going to, Councilmember Hunt, and if anyone else has any final comments, just raise your mic. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I will not be supporting this, and it really has to do with the implied changes to the project work plan, and specifically, the coconie, very important project for coconie. I think we, we still have an opportunity to consider that if we do get the grant, and I look forward to hearing from Public Works Director Moon if we do get that grant. But this is very important for, for us, for our partners in the Coconie Work Group, for the Snoqualmie Tribe, super important project, and we're, it's implied in this bill that we are not going to fund it and fund other things instead. So, I won't be supporting that, but I look forward to having continued conversations about how we can support this important Little Red Fish population that we really have a unique responsibility to protect. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Mertz?
I just want to put a bookmark on what the city administrator said. If we, next time we do a budget, if we have an ability to talk about positions that are essentially grant-funded, that are effectively grant-funded, as opposed to forever, I mean, a full-time position is a full-time position, but I could envision having a more valuable conversation next time we have budget, if we say, these things are essentially grant-funded, and these things are essentially general fund, long, I don't want to say long-term, because it, you know what I mean? Like, I, I think that'll be important, because if we, if we're ramping up our grant activities, I don't want to have that conflate my annual conversation about not increasing our per-capita cost in real dollars, right? I want to be able to understand what was a natural result of an increased grant activity. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Joe?
I just had a clarification question for city administrator. We didn't get the grant for Laughing Jacobs Trail in this last cycle.
Creek.
Laughing Jacobs Creek. Thank you. What did I say, laughing?
Trail.
There is a trail there, though.
There is.
Okay, thank you. But if we do get the grant in the second cycle, what would the administration do with that money? Would you take that grant money and try to find the matching money from the ending fund balance or other source? So, if we did get the grant later in the year, this project would still potentially go forward? Is that true?
Yes, I think the question just is the timing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Any more comments before I read this really long motion? Not seeing a hand, not seeing microphones raised. So, the motion before the council is to authorize $410,000 in professional service funding for public works project and franchise management assistance, and to authorize the following new positions. 1.0 FTE signal technician, 1.0 FTE senior engineer, capital projects manager for utilities engineering, 1.0 FTE senior engineer, capital projects manager for transportation engineering, 1.0 FTE capital program and franchise manager, and to direct the human resources director to revise the salary ordinance, to add the new classification for the capital program and franchise manager, and to direct the financial officer to bring forward a subsequent 2023-24 budget amendment to fund the professional services and additional positions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That passes with a six-to-one vote. Thank you very much. The next item of business tonight is our committee on regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. On April 12th, the LTAC committee will be meeting. We are looking to brainstorm ways to effectively promote the LTAC program with groups beyond the circle of groups that we have, have traditionally seen ask for funding, and see if we can kind of broaden the, the aperture a little bit more. April 18th, the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee will be meeting, and Chris Ray will be attending that meeting. April 19th is the Public Affairs meeting for Cascade Water Alliance, and I will be attending that meeting. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. On April 21st, I co-chaired the Connect2 Community Advisory Group to the Healthier Here Board. Connect2 Community is getting ready for a soft launch this month, we're so excited, of the Community Information Exchange Network. We are all just We are all just very excited. Just a reminder that the CEI will be a platform where health and behavioral health specialists will be able to share patient information and develop virtual care teams focused on the best outcomes for people with co-occurring conditions. So, if you need to think about it in a little bit different way, think about the Together Center as a brick-and-mortar concept that is similar to the virtual CEI, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish, is break down the barriers between health and behavioral health. So, we're very excited, going to launch here in just the next week or so, and you'll be hearing more about it. Then on April 29th, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Lunch and Learn, and we heard from the human services managers from Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Smaish, and Issaquah about the human services priority for each community. It was a really, really informative session, lots of good questions, lots of good discussions. I learned a lot, and our own Monica Negrella provided an outstanding presentation. So, I distributed a summary of the content to the council earlier. Anyone interested in getting that same document, please contact me. But it does, I think, provide a good overview of all of the concerns, the top concerns of human services people on the east side. And I'm also, I'll have to say, I was remiss in not inviting you to attend, and I will not make that mistake at our next forum that we put on for Eastside Human Services Forum, because this was just a really exciting and outstanding session. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
The Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will not be meeting this month, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting this Wednesday, April 12th, in person for the first time in a long time. So, look out, Renton, here we come. And meeting at 6:00 for, for a little beverage, I think, before the 7:00 formal meetings start. No actions are planned, but we will be discussing the legislative session and wastewater rates and regional water quality governance and veterans, seniors, and human services levy. But again, none of this is expected to have action taken. And I also have a committee that's not meeting this month. Services Safety in Parks does not have any agenda items for the month of April, but I know that we're already cooking up good things for May. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Hunt, I apologize for skipping over. You did a great job sending out an email update. Would you care to read that, or would you care to have Council President read it? Your choice.
I can read it.
Good.
But thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, on March 28th, the City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met, and we had two items. The first item was that we discussed ID 1394 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and Scope. And with this comp plan update, there will also be a full EIS environmental impact statement for the project. We reviewed the elements that will be updated in the comp plan, which includes land use, housing, mobility, capital facilities, utilities, parks, economic development, and two items that aren't required but that are already in the comp plan. So, these would be updates to existing items, and those are a cultural element and a human services element. So, after discussing that these two non-required items would be a light lift, because the work has largely already been done, for example, in the Human Services Strategic Plan, the committee did support the scope of the update as recommended by the administration. We also were asked to weigh in on if analysis of parking should cover central Issaquah or citywide, so only central or citywide. And we unanimously agreed in committee that parking analysis should be citywide. And we also discussed that council has weighed in on this previously, so we wanted to make sure that we were internally consistent with our past conversations on this and felt that that analysis should be citywide and should also cover best practices and recent research on, on parking. We also reviewed and supported the engagement plan for the comp plan update, which includes an emphasis on equity and which will include working with the Equity Commission, and will also include engagement in multiple languages, which we felt was very important. And overall, the committee felt that the Title 18 Land Use Code update, which we are nearing the end of, which a lot of staff work went into, a lot of council work and a lot of community engagement, that that would be a solid foundation for this comp plan update. So, the administration is recommending that an item come forward at a, on consent at a subsequent council meeting, not, not tonight, but at a different meeting, that would formalize the scope of the comp plan update. I wanted to flag this for council, because the comp plan is a big, is a big, is a big policy body of work, and this is sort of the first scoping conversation that we've had. But it is an intermediate and a long process, and so it is a bit unusual to have something come out of committee at an intermediate step and go to council on consent. But since the administration felt that this was, this was important, and since this is a big and important and complex undertaking and sort of an exception, we wanted to give an opportunity for council to weigh in now, so I will raise this a good of the order. But we also did, did agree with the administration's recommendation, which would be that this scope be formalized in a agenda bill that would be on consent at a future meeting, so that council could kind of approve, approve that in a formal way. So, again, I will raise that a good of the order in case, in case there are any questions for me or my fellow committee members on the comp plan scope update. Then also, we had one other item, which was ID 1340 Public Contractor Code of Conduct. And this code was based on the Private Contractor Code of Conduct that council recently incorporated into our municipal code on March 7th. There were a few changes that were made in the private version, for example, providing for flexibility in shaping the communication and outreach plan, because in the case of a city contractor working on a city project, it is often actually the city that is managing that engagement or those signs. And one other important difference between the public and private code is that the private code is recommended to be included as an appendix to the city's construction contracts, rather than incorporated into municipal code. So, this was recommended by both the Public Works Department as well as the city attorney to do this amendment, sorry, attachment, appendix to the city's construction contract, rather than have a second code in the municipal code to address city projects. The committee requested some additional clarity around where the changes to the code says things like "as may be required," and the committee also asked that the communications part of the code be rewritten to focus on the role of the contractor, and the committee requested that the administration bring back more information to the committee about the role of the city on that communications and public engagement and signage, et cetera, which will, will be the responsibility of the city. So, we felt we needed more information on that. And the committee did ultimately support this item, returning to council on consent at a future meeting with those requested changes and clarifications. The next meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will be on May 2nd, and we currently have two items, ID 1403 Comp Plan Update Housing and Land Use and ID 1411 Building and Fire Code Adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Deputy Council President.
Thank you. Really briefly, just to announce that the next Board of Directors meeting for Eastside Fire and Rescue is next Thursday at 4:00 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. This is our board orientation for the year, and we'll include this year an informational update on our deployment model, so that way we can all be good advocates of operations and how EFER goes about doing that. I am trying to get it recorded, so we can send it out to the rest of the council and anyone else who might want to get a better understanding of the deployment model for EFER, so stay tuned on that.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I also have a short report. The next meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board is on this Thursday, April 6th. The agenda includes adopting the, or recommending the adoption of the KITSAP countywide planning, planning policies? Forget what CPP stands for, but the countywide plans, basically, plus a discussion item on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Outreach Cities, and finally, information about the Puget Sound Regional Council's summer activities. They're doing a planning academy for students, and so if you know any students that are interested in planning, they're trying to get them in young this year, apparently. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Next, onto the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending or potential litigation. Per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NI, the items are expected to take approximately 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated to follow an open session. This is pretty exciting. Councilmember DeMichele has participated in this event before, but we have now got, for a second year in a row, a youth volunteering in Issaquah has been awarded the Association of Washington City's Center for Qualities, Qualities Community Scholarship. So, this year, Rishi Hazra has been awarded a scholarship from the Association of Washington City's Center for Qualities Communities. Rishi is a Skyline High School ASB president and is a regular youth member on Issaquah's Environmental Board. As the mayor, I would like to thank him for his outstanding service to our community and congratulate him on his scholarship. We are now seeking, nominations are now open for the Issaquah Hall of Fame Award. This is a top honor for individuals who made a lasting contribution to our community. Each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Issaquah Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. The award will be presented virtually at the Chamber of Commerce's Annual Issaquah Community Awards Event on May 24th, and nominations can be submitted at issaquahwa.gov/nominate. The deadline for nominations is 5:00 p.m. April 28th. The civil emergency proclaimed on March 6, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, is terminated as of April 3, 2023, and the exercise of the emergency authority vested to the mayor by Chapter 38.52 RCW is no longer necessary. The City of Issaquah shall continue to follow health and safety guidance issued by the Department of Public Health, Seattle, and King County, and the Centers for Disease Control. So, there's a few upcoming events to share. April 5th is Passover, which is one of the Jewish holidays recognized on our religious and cultural calendar. April 8th, there will be an underwater egg hunt. This is an egg hunt at Julius Bohm Pool from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Please bring your families in a basket to collect your eggs for this event, and preregistration is required. April 8th, we will be having a recycling event, so to encourage the use of recycled content material and more efficient use of water, the city is offering rain barrels at a huge discount. In addition, start backyard composting with a compost bin to save resources and money. Composting is a natural process that turns yard waste into rich soil. Yard waste contains mostly water, and once the material decomposes, rich soil is all that's left. Wormbing composting is an efficient way to convert kitchen scraps into nutrient-rich compost for your garden. These are simple to assemble and can be stored in or outside. Items are all made from recycled plastic. And the last event and activity is the Sustainability Fair on April 16th. So, come and join us for our inaugural Sustainability Fair, which is sure to inspire and engage you. Pickering Barren will be packed with vendors from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. that offer sustainable products, resources, education materials, kids' activities, and much, much more. You can learn more about the fair at issaquahwa.gov/sustainabilityfair. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Good of the Order. So, what have we got for Good of the Order? Let's start with Council President, and then Deputy Council President.
Thank you. I have a few items. First of all, I wanted to announce to the council and community members that before our next council meeting on April 17th, we are having a reception for the Ruth Keys and Community Environmental Award recipients, so please make a note on your calendars that that's there. Second, we had a community listening session that was great. And so, last week, we held a community listening session at Atlas Apartments. Council and staff heard from eight to 10 residents, many of whom hadn't really previously engaged with the city. And we heard about a variety of issues, including creek flooding, property crime, the homeless population, and more. Just wanted to appreciate the staff who came out and helped us with that, and then the community members who came down and had some deep conversations, got a chance to speak to us all one-on-one. And then the final item. So, as you heard in the mayor's report, the mayor has ended the proclamation for COVID-19 emergency. One of the things I wanted to bring up to council is that one of our policies that we started there that isn't technically in our rules of procedure or required as part of our agenda items, we've been summarizing emails received from community members at the top of that agenda item. And this was started when community members couldn't attend meetings in person to have their voice heard, but since then, we've obviously reopened in-person meetings, but we've also added virtual attendance options, so it could be said that people actually have more access to be able to voice their concerns than they ever had before. So, given all of that, I'd like to ask the council either tonight or via email to talk to me or call me, whatever, about what your opinions are on keeping or discontinuing that practice. I think we are at a time when we could recognize whether that is still useful for us or not, so I would love to hear more. And I will hear from you guys, I would guess, over email. So, those were the three items. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Deputy Council President.
Sure, unless there's anyone that wanted to give feedback on that right away. I think Councilmember Hunt--
Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
I think she has a separate--
Well, okay, so we'll go to Deputy Council President and then Councilmember Hunt.
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to say, as part of our consent calendar, we had an informational update on the public engagement toolkit and the update that's been done there. And if you didn't get a chance to look at it, it is excellent. I want to thank Autumn Monahan and Thomas Rush, I believe, are the two people involved in that, so thank you for your hard work on that. The Equity Board, I went back and watched some of the Equity Board feedback, so I appreciate them being involved in this process in a genuine way and that their feedback was made into the engagement toolkit. And also, if you go and look at the toolkit, there are these fun worksheets that product managers and different city staff will actually be able to use now. So, it's almost less of a document that you keep on the shelf and one that you're referring to constantly and writing and then using in your daily work. So, I just think that's excellent. I want to call out our city staff for being creative in this space, and thank you for your excellent work.
Very nice. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. As I said in my committee report, we do have a comp plan update coming up that will go through the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, but it will also very much rely on input from the full council and have parts of that process that go through the full council. And so, as such, I wanted to, as we're starting on that, I wanted to put it forward for my fellow council members, if there is feedback on that scope that I, that I spoke to earlier. We did, as a committee, ultimately recommend the same scope as was recommended by the administration, and we also felt like Title 18 sets us up well for understanding where we're going with this comp plan update. And I wanted to check in with my fellow council members and see if they had thoughts or questions, feedback on that, to give an opportunity now.
Anyone commenting this evening? And if not, always available to send comments to our council member by email. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hunt. Anyone else? I'm going to add a few little things and then do some calendar dates. Not seeing anybody. The reason I had mentioned Councilmember DeMichele and the AWC Scholarship was because she had the great privilege of going to an AWC convention and awarding one to our last year's scholarship winner. I just want to remind you all that that is happening in Spokane, and if you're not sure of the dates, we'll make sure to send it out to you again. It's an excellent networking and advocacy event, and we definitely need someone to present to Rishi. I am going, but you should go, too. The second one, I just want to let the council know, next week on the National Association of Counties pilot project that we're working on about integrated systems of care, we have our second site visit, and I will be taking a mirror from our human services department and going to Kansas and visiting two different counties who have very different levels of technology and cooperative agreements in place on models of integrated systems of care. So, I think this is something that our county is hoping to do as well. City of Issaquah got invited into the pilot project because we're a strange little city that happens to have a court, a jail, a police department, a human services team, community court, and so we actually are a tiny little microcosm of what counties are dealing with across country. So, pretty excited about that. And then there's the upcoming council meetings, Monday, April 17th, the anticipated-- Um, the anticipated agenda items include informational update on annual crime statistics, public hearing on Title 18 Land Use Code update, storm and surface water master plan, preferred cross-section for TR project, TR 028, the Northwest Sammish Road, St. Amish Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project. And on Monday, April 24th, the Committee of Whole, the anticipated agenda items include affordable housing and city hall planning, future options. So those are all the items for Good of the Order. Um, our next item is an executive session. I think we take a five-minute recess and allow everybody to grab a drink of water or whatever else you need. Um, so I will read us into executive session, and then we'll take a quick break. The next item of business is the executive session, and the City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. This item is expected to take 30 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. Uh, executive sessions are closed to the public, so we will now recess into executive session at 9:12 PM, and I ask the city clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who is not part of the closed session can remain in the main meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. So we are entering executive session. You have your break.